Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call this joint meeting of the City Council and the Washington County Board of Education to order. I just want to say thank you to everybody for being here, board members. I do want to acknowledge on Councilmember Munson's behalf, he apologizes he could not be here today. Something unexpected came up for him. But he has told me what he thinks about the proposed project that we're going to hear more about today. And, you know, I just know that this conversation we're having today is going to be very teleologic and future-oriented. So I'm very excited about that as well. And just to start off with an ancient Chinese proverb that I've been thinking about lately, and that is, "Those who say it cannot be done should not interrupt those who are doing it." So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the President of the Board of Education, Dr. Justin Hardings.
Well, thank you. You're a hard act to follow. I didn't know I had to bring a quote.
Well, you don't.
Very -- I'll tag onto yours, because I believe it's true, too. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank the mayor and council for having us. I'd also like to thank you for inviting us to hear a presentation by Urban Partners about your vision for downtown. Before, I think before the cameras were rolling, I said that we are heavily invested in downtown Hagerstown, and I believe that what's good for Hagerstown is good for Washington County public schools. And we appreciate the effort you're putting in to making Hagerstown a vibrant center of our community. And we look forward to being partners with you in that as we move forward. We, too, are missing one member. Mrs. Fisher had a prior engagement, and she sends her regrets. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. As you know, we met jointly with the county commissioners on Tuesday to discuss our concept, and it's like it's more than a concept now, for a downtown academic hub, which would be located between the existing Barbara Ingram School and the Maryland Theater. I won't go through as much detail as I did with the mayor, with the commissioners, but I would like to highlight a few things that we think are exciting about the project. We see a number of factors, three factors, that are all coming together that are pointing us in the direction of this particular project. First is the need for high school enrollment space. We had a high school in our capital improvement plan for a while, and because of the way we're considering the experiences we want our students to have, we've taken a new look at whether that should be there. The second is the success of the Barbara Ingram School and Washington County Technical High School, and the third is the success of USM Hagerstown. So I'm going to talk about each of those in sort of general terms first, and we'll get to the particular proposal. As I said, we've taken the comprehensive high school out of our capital improvement plan, and that reflects a couple of things. One, we've created new space through the Barbara Ingram School. We've created space for high school students through the middle college, created space for new students, planned to create new space through our virtual high school concept. And as we've watched our students experience those kinds of environments, I think it's become clear to the board, and I think Dr. Wilcox, that students are really hungry for those kinds of experiences. And I'm going to call them a Barbara Ingram-like experience, or a technical high school-like experience. And what I mean by that is, an experience where a student spends some portion of their time with us, whether that's a full day, or whether it's a part of a day, in traditional academic classes like we all think of from when we went to school. They then spend another part of their day either studying a career field, or a technical field, or engaged in some type of art. That's been the model at the technical high school for years, where students might spend part of the day doing carpentry, spend one day receiving instruction in carpentry, or in auto mechanics, or biomedical engineering, and spend the next day taking their traditional academic classes. The same thing's true at Barbara Ingram, where students spend part of their day receiving instruction in arts, and another part of their day receiving instruction in traditional academic classes. Students are thriving for that. There are more students applying for the programs at the technical high school than we can accommodate. There are more students applying to the Barbara Ingram School than we can accommodate. Those are all good things, because those indicate, I think to me, that kids are engaged and want those experiences. So part of trying to deal with the need for enrollment space, I think our goal is to try to develop more boutique specialized spaces and programs for children, so that -- high school students, so that they can have those kinds of experiences, too. We've put $500,000 in our budget this year to create a new program of that sort for students, and that's to use the 701 Frederick Street building, which had housed our facilities department, to convert that into a public service academy, where students would learn to become firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians. That's where they would take the tech career instruction portion of their curriculum. But we'd still need a place for them to take their traditional academic classes. So we think that there's an opportunity to not only provide the space that we need for students at the Barbara Ingram School to take their academic classes. We're facing a challenge in that area, because USM Hagerstown has been so successful. As we've leased or rented classroom space from them for many years, and their programs have grown, that's created a tension. It's a tension that's good, because it shows there's a lot of students downtown engaged in learning, either at the high school or at the college level. But eventually, we know that's going to come to a head, where they're not going to have the space that they need to accommodate our programs. So as we've thought about providing academic space for them, academic space for other students who are going to be engaged in other boutique-type learning opportunities, we thought that the building between the Barbara Ingram School and the Maryland Theater, which is owned by the Bowman Group, provided a great opportunity to not only provide space for Barbara Ingram, but these other programs as well. I joke with our board and our staff that it really is not an expansion of the Barbara Ingram School. And I've sort of formally imposed a fine, that if you call it a Barbara Ingram expansion, you owe $10 to the Education Foundation, because it's not an expansion. It really is the creation of a new academic space that can serve all of these different spokes around the hub. And those are the spokes that involve instruction in specialized places. There's a number of reasons that I think that facility is appealing. First is the ease of access to the Barbara Ingram School. Second is something we heard about before, which is the synergy that it creates with the Maryland Theater. The Maryland Theater is looking to expand the front of the house; they're looking to expand the back of the house. With our building next to it, with some emphasis on the arts, I think we can create a real energy that can provide a cultural and educational resource for downtown. Now, having said that, I want to emphasize, we believe that our project is a standalone project, that providing this classroom space can be done independent of what the Maryland Theater does, independent of what other entities do in downtown. But where there are opportunities for synergy and for us to work together, I think we'd like to do that. You've seen drawings of the proposed facility. It's about 53,000 square feet, and we think could accommodate roughly 300 or more students, both from the Barbara Ingram School and from other programs. The price tag on this project is, looks like it's going to be around $15 million. Those details are still being worked out, which brings me to some of why we're here today. As we've worked with the developer, worked with the county, we've spoken to the city in the past, I know our staffs have spoken as well, as we work to try to put together a finance model, that's difficult to do without knowing what funds are available. It's difficult to know what funds are available until you've developed, what funds are needed until you've developed a finance model. So you sort of run into a chicken-and-egg problem, if you will. So I think what is clear to us is, we can't do the entire lift on our own. And that's why we're asking for partnerships with the county commissioners and with the mayor and council. As you probably read in the paper, we asked the county commissioners on Tuesday to participate in the project. The exact figure, we can't know until we finish the discussions of exactly what the finance model would look like. But knowing that the commissioners are committed to the project, believe in it, and are comfortable with us discussing with the developer a contribution from them in the $4 million range, I think lets us continue those conversations in good faith. We're here to ask the city for the same thing, which is to see whether there's consensus that we can continue those conversations and try to hammer out a finance model that involves the city's participation. We're asking the city for a few things. The first is a contribution either upfront or towards the beginning of the project, and that doesn't have to be one year, it could be a couple, few years, of $1.5 million. We're asking the city for assistance with permitting fees. We're asking the city for assistance with expediting permitting. And we're asking the city to consider a TIF-type arrangement to help keep the ongoing costs at the building as low as we can keep them. We also are going to need some assistance with parking. Now, given the conversation we just had with Urban Partners, I realize that's sort of a moving target from the city's point of view. When different parking projects might be undertaken really is going to depend on where, and when, and how development comes. But clearly, if we're going to be bringing more employees and more people downtown, we're going to have to have some accommodation at some point for parking. And we'd just like you to consider that as part of your plan as you develop downtown. So as I said, what we're really asking for is a consensus from the council that you think this project makes sense. We realize you can't take a vote yes or no on your contribution until the finance model's in front of you, and we appreciate that. But as I think the lead partner in this project, we'd like some assurance that the council and the mayor do support the project, so that we can carry our conversations with the developer and with our other partners to the stage where we can really develop the details of that finance model that we can then bring back to you. Finally, in the Urban Partners Report, which I read last night, by the way, Mayor, the first paragraph, it says, "The city's vision is a commercial institutional and cultural center of the region." I think this is a great opportunity, where our vision for the experiences that we want to provide our students matches with your vision for what you're trying to create downtown, particularly as reflected in the Urban Partners Report and all the work you've done since the five of you were sworn in. And there's a chance to intersect with the county commissioners' vision for what they're trying to create in the county. So it's in that spirit of hoping that we have a unique moment, when all of our visions come together, that we can work together and make this project happen for the benefit of our students, for the benefit of the city of Hagerstown, and for the benefit of Washington County. So that's our request of you, and we're open to any questions or discussion. We have a lot of staff here who know more about the details than I do.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And just to let everybody know, we did meet back in April, I believe our executive session meeting was, and to discuss this project in a conceptual level. And at that time, I don't believe there was any objection on the council, but I do want to let everyone know that Councilmember Munson has authorized me to say that he fully supports this idea, and, you know, he didn't commit to any level of funding or anything like that, but he did want me to relay his complete support for this idea. So I wanted to start with that, and then I'll turn it over to any council member who'd like to ask questions or provide feedback. If not, I'm just going to call on somebody. Mr. Alshire, it's like he's getting the mic ready.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I think that this is pretty close to at least those sort of city asks from our discussion then. And for me, I'll just go through that list of the permitting process assistance and permitting fee assistance, I don't have an issue with. That's all. My mic won't work.
[inaudible]
So, out of the four items, the request for permitting process and permitting fees, I don't think that's a, for me, that's not an issue.
You go, I did leave one out, and that's assistance with the lay-down area, if I didn't mention that, I'm sorry.
Staging.
Staging, sort of a lay-down area for construction.
And, you know, and as it relates to the staging area, you know, there's clearly in this vicinity, you know, I believe we are entertaining opportunities to remove the burned-out building on Antietam, redevelopment of areas to the rear of that, which are currently vacant, and some interest in also demolition of the two vacant structures, and possibly the Massey Building next to the library. So I think in terms of timeframe, you know, I think in making a staging area available, those, to me, rise to the top as locations where demolition could occur that benefits the community, and staging area could occur then to benefit this type of project. So I don't think staging area is an issue either, at least for me. The 1.5 million, you know, I'm still pretty much at the area I was on that when I first started to ponder it, and that is, you know, I don't think the city can absorb that in a single shot, maybe 500,000 through some bond process over a three-year period. But I think that, I think that that type of discussion would have to be tied to exactly what type of pilot, you know, you're talking about. And we've done pilots for all kinds of things, you know. We have a pilot, I believe, for subsidized housing in our downtown, so I would certainly not be adverse to having a pilot for a productive educational facility downtown. And then the last is parking. I don't think you will find a bigger advocate on this council than I for a parking deck, and a parking deck at the Columbia Lot. You know, for me, you know, folks can drive through downtown every day and wonder, you know, how are we going to reoccupy the empty, or the worse, the underutilized buildings? And, you know, we can sit and wonder how that's going to happen, or we can invest in the necessary infrastructure to allow those conveniences to occur, and that is first and foremost parking. We have to invest in that infrastructure. And I don't care what city you go to, whether it's Salisbury, or Frederick, or Westminster, or Annapolis, their downtowns thrive, and they thrive heavily around the availability and the conveniences that parking decks provide to those large buildings that were built in there that, you know, at those times, didn't have it and didn't need it.
Thank you, Councilman. One thing I want to say, just picking up on the 1.5 all at once, or over time, that's some of what's motivating us to have these discussions with the mayor and council and the commissioners now, because what we'd like to do is buy down as much of the cost upfront as we can. But that impacts the developer's finance, his finance model, and whether, who holds title to the building, of course, affects finance models. And we have been finding it hard to have the detailed discussions that we've needed to have without the kind of information, the kind of views that you've expressed. So knowing those sorts of ranges, I think, will really help us get to a final decision.
And, you know, and I think, to put that in perspective, I thought about this as well, a little bit, you know, folks may hear a proposal like this and say, "Well, why doesn't the building owner just give the property free to the board of head, like Bispa was?" And the reality is, folks need to understand, you've got a piece of property that you needed to invest 13 million in to make it work. Here is a very similar scenario, it's just on the other end of this equation, the private developer is taking on that 15 million to carry over time. And so I don't really see any, you know, either one hugely different from each other in terms of the financing need. It's just a matter of, as you point out, who owns it and how it's funded to get there.
Who would like to go next? Ms. Nong, what are your thoughts?
I don't have a problem with it. Let's just find the money and do it.
Are you okay with the level of funding that's being requested?
Yeah.
Mr. Metzner?
I certainly agree with the concept. When the funding is fuzzy, to say the least, we need to see how that can be done and how it can be afforded. And parking, I think we need to make clear what we're talking about money-wise, because I would like to make sure that when we discuss this, we talk apples to apples. Because when you say we need 1.5 million and we need parking, what you're saying is you need substantially more than 1.5 million, substantially.
That's a fair point.
Potentially twice as much. And I just don't think we can look in the vacuum. I don't disagree with Councilman Alshire, but the whole concept behind the parking deck is there's somebody to pay for it. And when you're building a parking deck, and you're essentially, to a substantial degree, not charging any money for the parking whatsoever, to even cover the maintenance of the deck, then you have a whole different story, especially if you're talking about building a parking deck for a non-taxpaying development. So I don't disagree with the concept at all. Matter of fact, I firmly agree with it. We had talked about investing substantially more in a stadium. Let there be no misunderstanding, however, on the distinction between those two things. On the positive side, every one of us has taken the approach that we see downtown arts, entertainment, and primarily education. Education for all five of us when we ran for office, and having been in office, has been a number-one priority. The only distinction, I will say, when people talk about the stadium and the expense, is whether one believes it or not. That's an issue one can always debate. But we were sold on a concept that the stadium would eventually, through increasing property taxes, et cetera, et cetera, pay for itself. Like I say, one can say that was a bunch of hooey, one can say it wasn't, but I think that needs to be said in relation to the differences in the monetary approaches. If I had the choice between those two proposals, this would be my choice, education. So I am convinced it can be done, but I do think we have to be realistic when really talking about ultimately what the cost is and what the expense is. And I look forward to those discussions, and I certainly would want to continue them. And I continue to believe this project will come to fruition. It won't be because local government and county government and the board can't find a way to fund it.
Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I'll start with the easier ones. I think we can certainly find ways to negotiate permitting fees and permitting, expediting the process. We try to do that, expedite the process anyhow, and I think we've done a darn good job the last six or eight years, actually. On the TIF pilot, that just, that falls into the other parts of the financing, what the whole package is for us. The staging area, that can be worked out. Parking, as Lou said, I'll be a little more specific. Structured parking is $26,000 of space. If there's no revenue coming in to cover it, it's very tough. I am not against building a parking deck, but professional consultants have said, wait till there's projects, and generally, they're talking about projects with a return, to do it in conjunction with. Don't build it on speculation. But as Councilman Metzner said, it's going to be very hard to provide, you know, parking at those rates unless we level some buildings and provide a flat, level parking, which is not good for downtown. It just creates gaps, and it's not good. So we can continue to talk about it, all these things, but it's going to be very difficult. And then finally, the upfront one and a half million, we're going to have, we just raised taxes 11 cents, we're going to have a very hard time not doing, we're going to have a very hard time not having to raise taxes again. We're going to have to fight like crazy not to. So our main source of investment funds is going to be our bond capacity, which is good, because we've been conservative and prudent, and we have, we just had an upgrade, despite our financial circumstances, because we've been prudent, we've been paying our employees' funds. The difficulty is going to be, we have a lot of competing projects, and we need to weigh the value-added for each one of those as to what we can afford to put into them, not just the first one that comes down the block. So if we can find a way to do this, maybe as Christian suggested, through a series of payments, that, I don't see how we can exhaust our, you know, funding ability for one year on one project at one time. I think that's going to be difficult. I'm just trying to, you know, lay it down. So yes, I support the concept. To be frank, I think it would have been better to bring adults downtown and the students, but that hasn't happened. I think that would have much more, even though it would not be taxpaying, it would have brought a lot more spending and a lot more commerce to downtown. The students do it indirectly, and I think it's part of an overall psychological concept that downtown is, something's happening downtown. So, you know, I think the council, all five of us, will try to find ways to do this project. But each, but, you know, the big factor is parking, and, you know, the amount of capital we can afford, you know, that's going to be tough. And part of it's going to be, you know, what the commissioners, you know, really are able to find their way to do. So we'll continue to look at it, but we've got to really get a focus on, I've told the council that, staff, and I'll work with the staff to try to nail down our real bond capacity over the next few years, but, you know, they're going to be tough for us. So whatever we invest in, we need to be sure that's where we're getting the most value-added.
So it sounds to me like perhaps maybe not a one and a half million all at the same time upfront, but perhaps a phase over two or three years, you know, perhaps is the way to structure that conversation.
Again, in my opinion, I have to put it together with other things before I can say.
But what I hear is pretty wholehearted support for the concept. Obviously, details have to be worked out. I really do think it is a great opportunity for the whole community, not just the city of Hagerstown. Being an educator, I think the board is definitely moving in the right direction with these specialized educational spaces. I do believe that it provides students more choice and opportunity, it provides parents more choice. Magnet programs have been very successful and popular since their inception, I think, here in Washington County, and certainly in my experience working with them. It raises the bar, it provides more interesting programs. I think Board Member Brightman said something about helping reduce dropouts, because it gives students something interesting that is in line with their skills and abilities. So I think, from many, many aspects, this is a great opportunity. And to me, I see it as sort of reclaiming our downtown for our youth, who really are the future, and who will be the ones who, you know, move our culture and our community forward. And I look forward to working with everyone on this opportunity. I guess the next question would be, what are the next steps? Oh, sure, please.
Just trying to drill down a little bit on the parking, that always seems to be the issue that comes to the surface when we talk about downtown projects. And I guess, what I think I heard from the Urban Partner presentation is, at this point, there's a surplus of 200 parking spots, maybe not all in one place, and maybe there's a way of redistricting parking usage. Again, I don't know how that works, but could you help us understand what the value per income or revenue off a parking place might be? Because we're going to, you know, go back and look at what our needs are. I know that when we talk about a 53,000-square-foot building, that's not a normal usage as an office building, it's an academic space. So I'm trying to figure out what that might be. How would, how would you value, how do you value parking spaces?
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a shot. The proposed deck, the third deck, I think they envisioned 500 spaces. Let's just, I'm going to try and, I guess, put it in the way I'm. Let's just, I'm gonna try and, and I guess put it in the way I can understand it is, out of those 500 spaces, let's say that this project and the associated projects, uh, around it need 200 of those 500 spaces. And what the public should understand is we have two decks right now. Out of those two decks, 625 spaces, 575 of them are permitted now. So, there's 575 permits floating out there for use of the deck right now. So, really, there's only 50 spaces left in those two decks. And of those, I believe staff have said, the A and E deck is actually overpermitted. Uh, so, so use has exceeded, uh, the allowable spaces or the available spaces there, pushing more use into the university deck. But if you took the third deck, number one, uh, the 119 space lot, Columbia, I believe it's 119 spaces, is the most marketable, uh, parking space lot, uh, you know, in, in the urban area because it's largely located near the court, uh, systems. And I think that, you know, that generates, you know, a significant, you know, fund, uh, at that private level now. But if you took the 500 spaces, and let's say that, that this project and associated needed 200, out of that 200, I use the average figure of $20,000 per space. And let's say that the Board of Ed needs it half the time. So, $10,000 per space is about the impact. If you took that 10,000 times the 200 spaces, that's about $2 million of contribution that the city's making. And if, if you, let's say the Board of Ed would pay half the cost of a regular permit for those 200 spaces for some set period of time. That would then equate to about a million dollars that we would see a return, you know what I mean, through, through that partnership, and the city would sort of eat the other million dollars, um, aside from whatever funding it would garner from other users of those spaces during, you know, times when, when they're not in use by that dedicated Board of Education process. So, that's, that's, that, that, that's sort of how I see it, is that, you know, it would almost, we almost split, uh, the $2 million in half if those spaces were, were provided at, at half the cost of what we would otherwise provide them for, uh, for that type of dedicated purpose. And I don't think that that's foreign to, to other partnerships that we have, uh, developed with, uh, uh, businesses and, and uses and users downtown for our other spaces and other decks.
As far as the timeline, though, would you see that you'd have enough surplus available if a project were to come forwards?
I think we'd have to look at that in, in a lot more detail. I, I don't think we can sit here and answer that because we don't know how many spaces you need. I mean, do, have we heard that?
I think we, we shared that with staff at our executive meeting the last time.
And I also think we, I, I think we need to be very careful, okay, on coming up and identifying the Hagerstown Trust lot as the lot. And the only reason I say that i- is that is going to maybe be the best location, perhaps. It will certainly, without any doubt whatsoever in my mind, be the most expensive location. You're already dealing with a business, okay, who will never give up parking spots for their customers, for their employees. And now they have a lease that involves parking rights with the Public Defender's Office. So, you start talking about X amount of spaces for the board, and then you talk about X amount of spaces for Hagerstown Trust on top of the price they'll want. And what you get for that is a surface lot at a very expensive price that gets built up into a deck. And that's all you get for that, okay? What you get, for example, by massive demolition on Antietam Street and building a deck there and/or Harold Mail Lot is, one, a much less expensive piece of property. Two, development. I mean, we're sitting here looking on Antietam Street, wondering how we get rid of buildings that need to be demolished, uh, take down buildings that are blights right across the street from our library. And, I mean, to me, we make a huge mistake by just getting into this tunnel vision that the Hagerstown Trust Company lot is where we need to build this deck. I, I totally reject that idea. I, I think unless we were going to get the type of deal that I don't anticipate we'll ever get at that location, that we're much better off. Uh, if we're talking about Antietam Street, I mean, come on, folks. We're talking about less than half a block, um, of, of walking, if you're talk, and so.
That's the case, then you get a free lot over at the county.
Well. And Kristen, you start talking about ideas. If you want to talk about ways that we do this, we have to not get tunnel vision and just look at something that we've already decided is the has-to-be. Plus the fact, once you make that decision and make it public, then you just increase the cost of that threefold. And, and I personally would much prefer to see in, something like an Antietam Street structure, where then we're talking about urban development. We're talking about getting more than just turning a surface lot into, unless we want to get some private partnership with people like Hagerstown Trust. But I have some suspicions that's not going to happen. So, that, just food for thought when we talk about different ideas of how we do this. I, I.
And I, I think one of the reasons that I sort of phrased the comments on parking the way I did is, I, I didn't want it to all appear that we were coming in here telling you, we're not doing this project until you build a deck. I mean, that's, that's not our role. But I felt like I had to say for, for employees that, you know, if we're going to come downtown, we need to be sure that there's adequate parking, which, we know, you know, and obviously it's complicated to take care of those things.
Right. And I think Donna hit it, maybe we can work and find ways to, not to build the expensive parking until we have to. Our consultants say, don't build the expensive parking until you have to. They think there's enough parking now to build, I think the first building was 50,000, first office building was 50,000 square feet. That's a fair amount of parking within the existing structure, but then we need a garage. So, let's use the Urban Partners report, and we have another very professional report that says, don't build it on speculation, that was done about two or three years ago, and, and which Urban Partners built on. So, let's use that information. We're not going to solve it around this table and try to help them, you know, ask the staff to try to work with them to identify ways, and maybe within the existing parking stru- context, we can find ways. I mean, uh, people found places to park in those garages. You can find a place to park in Hagerstown anytime you want to. Anybody that says they can't come to Hagerstown and find a place to park hasn't looked. It's very easy. So, maybe by restructuring or refocusing or finding a corner, we can, we, we can find a way. Because I, I do think, but, but, but I'm, I'm just putting a shot across the bow that structured parking is extremely expensive. What we can get from revenues doesn't pay a third of the debt service, not even a third. Aunt Suzie pays the rest, you know, so.
I have an Aunt Suzie.
Yeah. She lives in the city. She pays the rest. She lives in the city, she'd be paying the rest. And that's always, uh, concerned me that if, you know, I'll get on, on my, uh, high horse about this. I'm all for a garage. If the business community makes guarantees of investment, we'll go right along with them. We'll build, we'll subsidize. But until I see those guarantees, until I see contracts working with us, you guys are bringing a specific project. So, so I recognize that.
And I think, again, any, any new deck is going to be tight.
Again, part of the financial negotiations might be, well, how much, uh, uh, cash flow, cash stream can we get coming back towards it?
And any new deck will have to require as many partners as possible, like you say, to guarantee that it's going to be paid for. Uh, and there's, there's a revenue stream.
Well, it'll never be paid for, that it'll be, it'll have a decent amount, some decent amount that I can justify.
If we're talking about the Columbia Bank lot, then there are ways to design it where it can connect to surrounding buildings, perhaps, that makes it even more appealing and makes the other properties even more valuable.
Let, let me ask one question that I think will help clarify some things, I think for me and some of our staff and, and our board, is, um, we just met with Urban Partners and they went through their, the eight catalyst projects that they're recommending, the funding for it. Our project's not on that list, which, you know, we've had some discussions about, and I know some of our members have discussed with your council. Does, does that fact put our project in competition with the eight projects? Especially as we're talking about the financing or 1.5 million, whether it's one, over one year or over a number of years. Does that put us in competition with them? Or talk to me about how the city approaches that.
Well, I'm willing to say no. It doesn't put it in competition. I think, uh, at least for me, and I would assume the majority of everybody here, it, it was, uh, included in the report as an assumption, as a project that was moving forward, perhaps on a, a faster timeline than, uh, than the other projects. But I wouldn't see it as a either-or sort of a situation.
And I'll tell you the same thing that I said to the EDC yesterday. One of the four good things about this report is that it is place-oriented and not project-specific. In other words, these eight sort of ideas and, and, you know, efforts and goals aren't nailed down to, it's got to be an aquatic center, or it's got to be a Board of Ed hub, or it's got to be, uh, you know, a stadium or, or a museum. You know, it's, it's more of a place-oriented, here are the efforts we need to make in these areas associated with these ideas to happen. I, I don't know how else to say that.
No, I, I appreciate that. I just think seeing the report created some confusion by some people that, well, you're frozen out. But I appreciated Marty's comments, too, that, you know, there's a pot of money and you have to make decisions.
Right. That's the way, it's, it's not exactly competition. It's, there's a, within those eight, there's competing priorities and so forth, and, uh, we only have limited resources. So, it's, so it's, it's part of, but, but I think the fact that it's not in there doesn't mean that it doesn't fully compete, and, ha, there, there's your word. Uh, it, it, it's not on the list, it doesn't put them ahead. Let's, let's put it this way, I don't think it puts those eight projects ahead of this. But, but we still have to mix and match and see where we're going.
And, and in fact, the whole effort of Urban Partners is meant to be, you know, multiple projects, you know, running on parallel tracks, you know, and certain elements can be implemented as, you know, the funding is available and as the, the opportunities come along. And certainly, this effort is part of that planning and, uh, and budgeting process. Mr. Brubaker.
I, I have a, a question, um, from what Justin said, and the emphasis was, it's not a Barbara Ingram expansion. And I know we went over some of the numbers, uh, earlier, but refresh me, is there like a, a percentage that you would say, is the Performing Arts expansion, uh, expansion? Uh, is there, uh, I, I know there's core facilities in there, right, that's coming over from the University Center. You're going to do. By core, I mean, they serve all the students.
Right. So, right now.
But, but is, is there also expansion space for, for the Performing Arts Center?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, you've said it's not an expansion of the Barbara Ingram Center, so raises the question.
Let me answer the question this way. So, and my numbers may not be exactly right, but they're going to be close. There are about.
Mine weren't either.
There are about 250 students at the Barbara Ingram School right now. So, half the students, 125 students, are in that school at any one time. Another 125 are at the University System of Maryland or eating their lunch or doing something else. So, if this new facility is going to replace what the USMH facility is doing now, that means it will take about 125 students, let's say 150. 150 students, seats of the capacity of that new building at any one time. If the building will hold 300 students, that means we have roughly that many additional seats that we could use for the academic programming of the Public Service Academy or any other boutique-type program that we might think to create, where students need to spend time doing academics and other times doing. So, that's why I say it's not a Barbara Ingram expansion, because when you think Barbara Ingram expansion, you think it's part of the school. And really, it isn't. Students will be taking some of their classes there, but so will a whole host of other students.
Right.
And that's where I think there are opportunities for other synergies downtown, uh, you know, whether we were to create a hospitality program that would, that would work in conjunction with what USMH is considering, and I'm just brainstorming here. As soon as I say one of the programs, people misinterpret that that's what we're going to do. But there are lots of opportunities, is my point. So, that, that's why I don't call it a Barbara Ingram expansion.
I wanted you to emphasize that.
In other words, you're not expanding the performance space.
Correct. That's what he, that's where, right, that's where Marty's coming from.
That's what I'm trying to get.
That we're not moving the arts over into this building. As I had taken it before, it was supposed to be a classroom for academics, then you would have a cafeteria.
Correct. And science lab space.
Science lab.
Right. Currently not available to you.
Right.
Even at USMH. Any other questions or feedback? I mean, this is all, we're getting into the weeds, I think, of some of the details, but I do appreciate the, uh, level of conversation and the, uh, the show of support. I do think that you have a council here that wants to work with you, that, uh, would like to help you see this project to fruition. I know staff are standing by and ready to work with your staff and, uh, and everybody to, to also make it happen. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, I guess I'm presuming the three staffs have enough to keep, but working on not just the, the details themselves, but options. I mean, to me, it seems, I mean, you almost need the county, city, and the LE to do that.
I think that's where you said, what's the next step? I think the next step is, uh, and I, and I think it's fair to say we're the, sort of the lead partner in this because we're certainly going to put in a lot of our own money in order to make this happen. But to work with the partners and to have the next stage of conversations with, uh, the Bowman Group and the city and the county to try to get the details of that finance package sorted out, so that the next time we meet, we can come back and say, here's exactly what we're looking for, and here's the, here's the contract, if you will.
Okay, but you also might think about having options to bring back to, you know, I know it gets confusing, but to try to bring back, when here it is, doesn't always work either.
I, I understand that.
Where are we at as far as it being the election year? Is, are the commissioners that are in place now going to be making a decision, or is it going to be after the election? Does anybody know that answer?
I think we can't know that answer until we try to.
I just wondered because, you know, it's always, you know, and I know that you're at a timeframe, but let me just commend you on having the whole VOTEC area now being looked at again way back. And I know that college is an important venue, but there are kids that just don't want college. And I've always felt that our VOTEC program that once was very good and intense kind of got shifted. And now for this to be happening as part of VOTEC as well, I think that's, it's great. I really do. I think it's giving those kids the advantage that would not have had the advantage before. But I do commend you on that. Hopefully, it will move forward.
Thank you. I thank the council for your cooperation and your support. I'm hopeful that this project can be an example of how government can work well in Washington County when we all find common interests and sit down and work out an agreement that can work for all the entities involved. It's something we can all be proud of once it's done.
Any other questions or comments from any board members or city council members? Well, thank you again for being here. Thank you for your investment in downtown and, uh, and for your investment in our children and our community. It's much appreciated, and with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you. And we have some refreshments in the clerk's office, if you guys are. Greetings again. We're going to reconvene this, uh, work session to the next item on the agenda, which is the next steps, actions for implementing the community's city center plan. Before I turn it over to staff, uh, once again, I want to thank staff for their fastidiousness in getting this, uh, project done, uh, for keeping Mr. Hartling busy over these last six or seven months. And also thank Mr. Hartling for his work, uh, his knowledge of the city of Hagerstown and his effort, I think, is, uh, pretty remarkable. And, um, I'm going to, with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Thank you.
I know, I know that the effort here that we're trying to, this is immediate action on this. This is not a plan that is going to sit on the shelf and collect dust. The reason we're here right now is to, uh, take action, and I know that's the point of this next discussion, is to get, uh, specific items, uh, approved for action. So, take it away.
Okay, just 30 days ago, Mr. Hartling with Urban Partners delivered his. Just 30 days ago, Mr. Hartling with Urban Partners delivered his recommendations for eight Catalyst projects. And as the mayor has said, we're here tonight to ask for a set of actions by the city council to move forward implementation of the plan. The implementation of the plan overall falls both with public and private sector responsibilities. The city has an opportunity to jumpstart very quickly implementation with the, the set of action items that we're recommending tonight, and I'd like to walk you through that. The memo also recognizes the 130 hours of community input that went into the plan, and names many of our partners and stakeholders that support, support the plan. The memo also talks about some actions that has been completed to date. We have made application for community legacy funding to support Catalyst projects. We've also, with project number eight, the Expanded and Targeted Home Ownership Support Strategies, have had conversations about that, and there is a July 22nd action item of the council for the introduction of ordinance amendments and changes to the rental licensing program, as well as the authorization of additional staff in the code department to support those actions. Staff is also looking at some research related to the farmer's market, as well as investigating opportunities for acquisition of properties under the city's home ownership program that supports Catalyst number eight. I'm going to jump right into the specific asks that we have tonight. We're going to start with Catalyst Project number five, which is linking City Park and the A&E District with a trail and new housing. We're focusing tonight on action items that support the, the trail. We're asking for authorization for a request for proposals for the design of trail amenities. This would be an RFP for landscape architect firm that would help to conduct public meetings on the desired design amenities on the trail, and also preparation of construction estimates, and do a presentation back to the mayor and council with the recommendations from that scope of work. The next item is to approve a funding plan. We estimate that a basic path and, walking path and bike path would start at approximately $750,000. To add some additional amenities, such as water features, a fountain, splash pads, other types of pedestrian amenities along the trail, that this would add an additional $200,000 in costs. So there's a staff recommended budget of $950,000 for the trail with the amenities, and the proposed funding plan is $365,000 from the proceeds of the sale of the armory property and the balance to be financed through bonds. And the third action item is to authorize staff to negotiate the acquisition and transfer of the properties needed to make the trail happen. There's been preliminary conversations with property owners that is very favorable. We're looking to formalize those conversations into negotiated agreements that we would bring back to the mayor and council.
So let's stop on that particular one and get the sense of the council on each of those action steps. In terms of the RFP, do we want to do the thumbs up, or doesn't, should we consider anyone's non-objection to be tacit approval? What say you?
Mayor, I'll make it easy. I've read the packet, so I'm going to agree with everything that's being recommended myself.
Okay. Mr. Brubaker.
On the funding, I talked to staff this morning, and I guess, I think we should give the staff some flexibility, whether it's bonds or using bond proceeds on hand, because bond proceeds on hand need, I know this is technical, but if we're going to do approval, then we don't want to lock them into something. Bond proceeds need to be spent within a certain time period, and if a project's going to move forward before another, it's possible that that might be a better solution than, let's say, the armory money, which we're not under any restrictions. So I, I'm just saying, we ought to make this loose enough that they can use bond proceeds. Is that, is that thrust of what you might need?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were splitting it between the 365 and the proceeds from the Army Reserve, and then the balance to get to the 920.
Well, I understand that. I'm, I'm just saying, if, if the bond proceeds are sitting in the MELP project, or is that where they are? I think that's where they are. You may not-
Well, MELP, we've got all three. We've got-
Yeah.
The Army Reserve money, we've got existing funds from prior CIP projects that came in under budget or, or weren't completed, and then we've got bond funding in the MELP project as well.
Okay.
So we are suggesting shifting the 365 from MELP to this, this project, because our target date is to try to get the trail done by next August.
Well, I understand that. But what I was saying is if, if we need to spend the bond proceeds without, so we don't get a penalty, you have, you can't only hold bond money, then-
You're talking about the existing bond funds.
What if this is moving faster than, you know, so I just, when, is this going to come to us just with a nod, or whenever we, I think it just ought to reflect that if staff needs to use bond proceeds in lieu of bonds-
That's fine. If you want to put some wording in there, just, we weren't looking for formal votes on these, but just nods of the heads tonight.
I just think the minutes should reflect on some of this, because it might become a concern.
That there's some flexibility there.
And we don't want to have to dump them or incur a penalty.
But you're okay with, you're okay with the RFP and the property transfers or acquisition?
Yes.
Mr. Alshar.
Does that route impact the ability, in terms of timeliness, should we reach resolution on the MELP property to conclude that effort?
Michelle and I talked about that. We feel if, if we've got a green light on MELP in the next two months, let's say, we've got available funding we can use to meet the commitments that have been discussed. They're lower than what we had in the CIP, they're lower than what was in the proposed budget, so we're comfortable that we can do that. We would follow, just to be clear, council member, we, we might have to follow up with funding from a bond issue, future bond issue, but we've got funds on hand that we can use initially to complete the MELP commitments as well.
Okay, because I'm not in favor of jeopardizing that.
Right.
So if you're telling me it doesn't, then-
We don't see, yeah, yeah.
Okay. The second is, it appears that this is tied to some degree, to some level of private investment in that area. What, what will be, or what's expected to be the relationship between the two, both in funding and timing?
Are you talking about the property owners whose property this trail would intersect?
Probably the housing.
The housing.
If I can speak.
You're right.
The assumption was that the trail goes in first, and then the housing occurs later. The trail is the amenity that makes the housing attractive.
Our other thought was, as we, as we thought about next steps, is we wanted to try to give the mayor and council an opportunity to make a very visible indication to the community that you're moving forward. And construction of the trail gives us that opportunity. It's, as you know, something that's been talked about for several years, trying to link City Park to the A&E District, so it's, makes sense from that standpoint as well.
Low-hanging fruit. So are you okay with the RFP, council member Alshar, and the, and the-
I'm okay with the RFP. I would assume this will come back for some additional discussion-
We'll, we'll bring-
At the conclusion of that.
Yeah, we'll bring the proposal back and the contract, as well as the design.
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else who's not, are you?
Yeah, I want to know about the properties, application of properties.
To date, the conversations have been informal, positive conversations, but in order to build the trail, it would require either property acquisition or easement.
How many properties?
I think we're talking about three property owners in this area.
And I'm assuming there it's some fair market-assessed value.
I would assume that there would be an appraisal or a market valuation-
Okay. Somebody's not going to see this and go, oh, you're putting a trail through here. You know, my expectation is the property's worth $600,000 when it's worth $385,000.
Let's not use those numbers, Chris.
Sorry.
Well, I just, yeah, because I, I just want to, I just want to know if you'll let me know then.
Why is that numbers specific, something?
Please.
That just seems so unfortunate.
Okay.
She had those numbers. I just came from my head.
I think it was like, well, the trail's 10 foot, but then you got a border on it, so it may have been, as much as maybe 25 feet. It's not, these are slivers we're dealing with, the edge of parking lots mostly.
But staff has had those discussions with the property owners that would be affected, and all seem to indicate a positive response, so I think it's-
They gave us letters of support for the community legacy application.
Great.
And I, I think what's important, because when I looked at it, you know, we sit here and talk about this stuff for extended periods, but as someone who lives in the South End and drives what I call sort of the alley between downtown and South End pretty regularly, I thought that this was going, to some degree, in the vicinity of that alley, and I'm assuming folks know which alley that is. And it's not, so that was a good thing. I just thought, any disruption to that, you know-
Not his alley.
Not your alley.
Not your alley.
It's not up your alley.
It's not up your alley.
It's not up your alley.
It's Kristen's alley.
No, it's just, I'm telling you, it, everybody uses sort of that, that cut through to the South End, just as much as there, there's probably ones, you know, in other parts of the community that have that.
But this is, this would be the most direct and flattest pedestrian route-
Oh, yeah, it's a good route.
Connecting the A&E District and City Park, and, yeah, I think, and there are a lot of opportunities for public art along this corridor, in terms of the landscaping and other features, you know, they're talking about water features or other attractions, you know, to really make it not just some deadbeat, you know, pedestrian corridor, but to make it an attraction.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one comment?
Please.
We got some preliminary numbers from some landscape architecture firms. That work's probably going to be under $10,000. So we'll probably, as a staff, we could hire that firm. And then what we're thinking about doing is having a public hearing to have people talk about what amenities they'd like to see on the trail. Is there a theme of this trail? And then the landscape architect would put together a presentation that we would bring back to you to review and approve, and then we would, I think we can do all the design then in-house. That's, that's what we've been thinking.
Sounds good. All right, so we're good with Catalyst Project number five and these first, well, not, they're not the first three, but these next three action steps. Okay. And by my count now, we're up to 10 things already, action steps already underway, just looking through this memo. So let's look at number three, then.
Catalyst Project number three is the support of the expansion of USMH, specifically looking at the first, as a pilot, upper-floor renovation to create student housing units. The first request for action is to authorize staff to negotiate in draft agreements with USMH and a property owner. There have been some preliminary conversations in that this would require a three-party agreement between the city, USMH, and a private property owner for a single pilot project. The aspect would contain a master lease between USMH and the property owner, and there would be a city guaranteed to support up to 50% of any loss endured by USMH under a master lease. And there's a conservative estimate in the memo of $8,500 per year as a, as a possible estimate. We would bring final agreement documents back. What we're looking for is your authorization to begin those more detailed negotiations and the drafting of the agreements. The second is to pledge $250,000 from the city's First Third Grant Program for this pilot project, student housing project. The mixed-use project is being proposed in the pilot with retail on the first floor and upper-floor housing. The guidelines of the First Third Program allow for support of mixed-use projects, and this is consistent with the pro forma that Urban Partners provided us. There is an available balance in the, in the First Third Grant Program to support a $250,000 pledge. And those are the two action items recommended. If you want me to pause while we discuss those.
And I just want to, on the next page, it says the actions completed to date with this, is that you've already received a letter of support from USMH supporting the concept for further exploration, and we have submitted, as a part of the work we did earlier in the month, the community legacy grant application, so-
In addition to-
And having conversations with potential property owners who are willing to partner on this.
Correct.
So, nod of the head from Mr. Metzner?
Yeah, I-
Mr. Brubaker, go ahead.
I just have a question. The city would provide a guarantee to support up to 50% of any losses endured by USMH under the master lease. Losses occurring because of the rent, I mean, I guess I need a little explanation on that.
If I can explain this, the concept is that for this first couple to get it going, USMH would master lease, let's say, four apartments. They would then re-lease to students.
Right.
If they didn't get enough students to occupy for enough months to cover the whole cost of their master lease, then there would be a loss, and the notion is that there would be a sharing of that loss between USMH and some entity in the city, presumably.
You didn't mention rent levels.
The rent level that we've targeted, well, the, in the modeling that we did, we assumed a $780 rent for, plus electric, for the students, and that that would be for two students, so they'd each be doing $390. My experience is that these apartments sometimes attract more than two students, and therefore their price might even be a lower price point. But let's assume two paying $390. USMH has felt that would be a reason, I think it's a reasonable number to get someone to rent that shared apartment. If they collected that, I believe in the pro forma, we did it, for 95% of the 12 months, it would cover the master lease payment. If for some reason, you know, they didn't collect all that money, there could be a shortfall. The, the shortfall, I believe, at $8,500 cost to the city, would mean that there would only be 50% occupancy. I would be stunned if we were-
If there were 50%.
If there were only 50% occupancy.
So the risk factors are the occupancy and the duration of that occupancy.
Correct. That's the, the risk factors, well, and the rent, and the rent you can get, but it seems to me the rent's pretty darn low.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's-
I was thinking it was the rent, but it's actually, it's the tenancy.
It's the tenancy, you know, you get a, I mean, for instance, you know, does it turn out that the students that are coming from out of town only come for the fall semester, and they got none of them for the spring semester? I mean, something like that might happen. I can't imagine it, but it could conceivably happen. The worst-case scenario we could imagine, which is the one Jill's put in here, is that you only get 50% occupancy. They're $17,000 short on their rent, and they ask you for half their $17,000. That would be the worst-case scenario, and that would be dramatically bad things happening.
And this project really helps us achieve two goals, which is to get Upper Stories re-occupied and rehabbed, and it also brings residents, the kinds of residents we always say we want, because even though they're college students, they've got to have somebody's money in their pockets.
And it helps the USMH.
Helps USMH, you know, so that's, you know, obviously the strategy that we're, we're undertaking, but-
I would say, I think it's possible that they might come to you one year and say, gosh, we lost $400, can you give us $200 bucks? I mean, that's, I think, what's really possible here off this.
Mr. Roush.
I'm okay with the concept. What I don't like is, number one, I don't know what property owners we talk to. And number two, I don't know what property owner we appear to be currently negotiating with. The third is, I don't know if there will be the availability for compounding of current incentive programs on this prospective use. I.e., the, let's say they're a professional and they're a student, and they have, you know, opportunity to compound with existing city programs for, you know, other types of rental assistance. And the other is, I go back to my original comments. I didn't envision us using the First Third funding for residential redevelopment of buildings. And I think if we're going to partner with a private entity in this manner and put up that kind of money, I'd wanna see some type of guarantee that that partnership is gonna produce some type of useful commercial purpose on the first floor. That, I think, would appease my concern of investing that type of money, which I envisioned would be commercially oriented into what's gonna be a primarily residential building. And that's, so, so for me, you know, I feel like we're doing all of these things in a pretty public manner. If somebody is doing this, which is a good thing, I'm not sure why we, why we would conclude those conversations, at least among this body, you know, through, through a rather anonymous process.
And I would clarify that the conversations to date were the interest of a property owner and conceptual conversations, but not negotiations. It was conceptual conversations to date of interest for us to bring it to you for, for approval for the next step.
I have an interest in, in, you know, what, what properties we're talking about, you know, where their vicinity is within the location of the university. I just, I need that type of information.
I think the university is interested within one block. Is that what you would say, Mr. Harling, is just within that immediate vicinity of USMH?
Troy, looking at that, then, the possibility of a building that we have, if we look at, well, I've already brought that up. We've got the commercial part, it could be the bottom, and we also have the other side of the building. But I choose the questions that Ian asked in the beginning as far as the argument and everything.
Like I said, I think the concept's great, I just think that those pieces, for me, need to be tweaked and better understood before I would say yes to it.
Well, certainly if you're negotiating or drafting an agreement with the property owner, that's going to be public information. So the question is, do we wanna authorize staff to go forward and, and do those kinds, do that work and bring it back to us for review and approval? That would be number one under that seven.
Not with that person, not for me.
No, and not me either, because again, I asked about, the building that we have now gone into that is standing.
Which one are you talking about?
The one right there on Washington Street, right across, okay? From the university, I mean, you know, it's ours. We've already gone into it, so why not? And another question.
We don't have the hall in the town.
Oh, yeah, we have that too, but that's not, that, this one across the street's better. I think you could get more out of it. My other question is, is that I really don't know how many kids there are or adults, I still call them kids. They're not, you know, 18 years old, they're still a kid to me. But how many actually are now coming into the university that is coming from out of town? You know, when you said about, okay, maybe, you know, fall, fall session, but not spring session.
I was being real conservative.
I mean, how many are we actually talking about? Because at one time, we were only seeing this as a night school, which did not impress me, but that's all we could kinda get. And now it's kind of done to reverse, but how many are we actually looking at?
I'm not prepared to go under oath with this number.
No, it's okay, I just, you know.
My, my recollection is that Mark told me, I think he had 70 full-time out-of-town students.
Nursing students primarily.
Mostly nursing.
Yeah, and to see if the interest is there, I mean, certainly, you know, it's like the parking garage. I'm not building it on spec.
But one thing we know from history in this town is there was a large interest in housing for post-secondary education historically in Hagerstown.
There was.
That's where the Dagmar started.
Got it.
Dagmar with student housing.
Secretary of School.
For the Hagerstown Secretarial School, Business and Secretarial School.
Yes.
And if.
I think that the demand can be met.
I, I think it can too.
It's there.
I don't wanna use examples, but I looked at the building up on the corner across from the county administration building, which I think is an awesome building for that type of proposed use and can meet that demand. But if it comes with the efforts to date of the property owner, and it comes with the, the lack of, of commercial activity being guaranteed in some reasonable fashion on the first floor, then, then to me, I'd rather look elsewhere.
And that's a lot for a first floor.
And I hate to say that, but that's how I feel.
I, I think it's important that, given what we're talking about, that, that at some stage in the game, obviously, some council members know things that I don't know, and that's, that's reasonable, 'cause I don't make some of the inquiries. But ultimately, I think this needs to be discussed in an executive session with regards to property locations and various other things. I think that's clear. But I also think it's absolutely and abundantly clear that this is an action plan that we should undertake. My, my biggest concern that I'm hearing that I would agree with is we have to look at where this is and who we're going to be dealing with based upon past history, 'cause I know this concerns. Correct.
What are we getting for our 250?
Right.
I mean, because the two we've approved so far, we've done them pretty.
Right, exactly.
They've been, they've been fairly open and we've been fairly certain of what we're getting.
Well, the bottom line is, we haven't approved it blindly. We haven't, we haven't approved it without knowing any idea of what we're approving. So, I mean, my bottom line is, before I would approve First Third, we would have to go through the process that we've gone through with the other First Third Grants. And that means we should talk about it well before it gets to that stage.
Well, I think the, you know, thinking back on why we created the First Third Grant, I mean, a big part of it was, we want to increase property values. And we wanna increase the investment in properties that need the investment. One of the biggest barriers to whether it's commercial or residential occupancy is the sprinkler, you know, the sprinkling and other code-related improvements that have to be made. And so the point of a First Third Grant is to say, okay, we understand that the community standards we have, the codes, require a certain amount of investment, and we're willing to kick in this First Third to help make that happen.
Well, I, I agree with Kristin on, on several points. I think I would like to find a way to somehow incorporate the, the commercial development of that structure, if we're gonna invest in it, as, as well as the upper floors. And, and I also agree that we should watch for overlap of our own subsidized programs. Somebody's a student, but then they say, I'm an artist, therefore I qualify for something else. And I don't think that's right when we're already charging low rents, as the, as our consultant points out. So I think we should just be careful that we don't allow that to happen. I don't think that's necessary, you know, and, but the commercial thing, I'm, I'd hate to delay this 'cause of that. I don't wanna delay it 'cause of that. But I'd be interested in maybe seeing if we can find a way to, to.
Certainly seems.
Incorporate that somehow, 'cause that's what, that's what our goal is also, is to get that first floor lively.
Well, and it certainly seems like with the amount of students you're telling me this school has, somewhere along the line, we're missing, associated with this school, what every single college/university I am aware of exists, and that is a bookstore. And it seems to me that if we have this type of student population, it's inconceivable that at some stage of the game, we wouldn't be able to attract some type of, of commercial that is oriented towards the university. I mean, I don't know, I just don't know of any, whether it's Salisbury or Frostburg or other places, that haven't started picking up commercial activity directly related to the university. And I think one of the other things that we need to do as a community is, we've spoken up this, this school very well, but I think Penny has said something that is not an inaccurate perception, that we still haven't, you say, how many was ballparked outside?
I think it was seven.
Yeah, I mean, and, and what's the enrollment, do we know? I mean, we're getting to be a significant institution here with an enrollment of 500. This keeps up, we're going to ultimately, you know, one of the big concerns, one of the naysayers of downtown, the number-one naysaying issue that I remember is, if it's successful, there'll be no place to expand. And what we said, boy, that's the problem we wanna hear, is that it's gonna be successful because it will expand. And, and we need to keep in mind just what we're doing. We are, as much as we hear these bad things about downtown, look at what's happening with what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about a presence of 500 students at this school. We're talking about a presence of potentially 500 high school students. We're talking about 1,000 students downtown. This is a synergy that will create potentially massive movement generationally. The perceptions that appear downtown, we can destroy generationally by bringing 500 to 1,000 students down to our downtown on a daily basis. And, and I just think that to let these things go would be a horrible, horrible error. And I totally agree with what I've heard around the table, though, we can't throw a quarter of a million dollars just to somebody who says they're interested without us doing our appropriate work.
I'm wondering.
Going through this, that.
I understand.
What we're trying to do is to reserve 250, because this is a popular program, and it's not a bottomless.
And, and I recommend we do that.
I got no problem with that.
We're recommending. I think we all agree with that.
All right, so we're, everyone's going to number two for that, well, under that.
But we're advised to reserve.
On the reserving, on the reservation.
Reserve, yeah.
And I think to get something meaningful back to the council and to get past the concept stage somehow or another, whether we've used the right words here or not, staff have to have conversations.
Absolutely.
But we're also trying to give input.
Right, I understand, but we have to have conversations that, that do involve negotiations.
Absolutely, yeah.
Obviously, coming back to mayor and council with interim steps.
Well, and if I could inject here, particularly because the, if we want USMH to provide some guarantee, they gotta pin down what this is and go through their process of being able to do that, so.
What I don't want to happen, though, is to leave this room today, and then two days from now, four property owners within the vicinity that has these types of eligibility opportunities in buildings that they own say, I didn't know about this, and why didn't you consider my building?
Well, they know, if they do, they know about it now, and I think we're considering every building.
Saying that.
Yeah.
I brought up, we have a building. The city has a building.
And the idea, again, of a catalyst project, this, you know, if we can get one as a demonstration of what's possible, the private market will pick up on it and say, hey, you know, I own a building and I have upper floors that are vacant, and it's been demonstrated what the cost is and what the return is.
I think it's an understanding by staff that we're.
But Kristin has a good point, though. We get that, we're, we're, we're thinking of a couple of buildings or people we, that have, we're having, and then we do it, and it's government money, and yet other people didn't have a chance. So somehow we gotta be aware of that, yeah.
It's open and all, but first come first serve with the best product.
Right, the best plan. Or the most feasible or the least amount of other barriers that, you know, go along with rehab. Okay, so it sounds like we have endorsement or consensus to move forward with both of those action steps. Given all of the, all their feedback as well in terms of what to consider. All right.
The next is Catalyst Project number one and the Strategy for Office Development and Recruitment. And we're asking for the action of authorizing staff to prepare a request for qualification to identify potential developers for the central lot. We worked with Jim on the details around this and his recommendation that this process would be a request for qualifications, for us to review the experience of developers. And the purpose would be to evaluate those who are interested and which developers would be most successful based on a set of criteria that we define. After the top developer candidate is identified through the process, there would be negotiation of business terms. And that the final RFQ document, right now, all we want to do is draft the RFQ that would allow us to, to issue this and seek potential developers. We would bring that back to the mayor and council for your review and approval. And I can let Jim expand a little bit on this, because it's a difference between RFQ versus RFP and the questions that you may have on this.
I just wanna, I think it may be more of a statement, and because I attended the EDC meeting yesterday, the Washington County Economic Development Commission meeting yesterday, you did the presentation, which went great. But this seemed to be one of those eight that rose to the top of, of the conversation in the context of, why are we doing a request for qualification? And is this a project or a product that is going to be vetted through some type of master developer or some local development, you know, preference, if you will? And, and, you know, clearly, at least for me, just as tenaciously as the Washington County Economic Development Commission proceeds through their steps to seek both local and outside private investment to bring business into this community, I feel that in any one of these eight items, we should equally do the same. And I don't have any intention in this process, including as it relates to this particular item, in simply narrowing that scope to either a master developer or simply to the local business community. If, if someone receives this, has the qualification, and shows up on the doorstep ready to do, they will get equal treatment, at least from me, and the opportunity to do so regardless of where they hail from.
Right, and let me, let me be clear about what our intent was with this. This would be a developer partner that you would select to get the partner that you thought was the most qualified and likely to be successful getting you office development on the central lot. And that developer partner, once you'd selected them, as Jill said, you'd negotiate a set of business terms, which, among other things, will include a termination clause if they don't perform, because you don't wanna tie things up. And then that developer will go out and hunt for users for you. And one of the things Jill and I have talked about that we definitely want in the criteria is to see what their plan of marketing the sites would be. And the best qualified people that show up, you will pick. And you'll get your partner, and your partner hopefully, but go out and work like the dickens for you and bring you some office users. I mean, that's the game plan here. And so the RFQ is to open that door to, and see who shows up and says, I'd like to be your partner. And there, there we go, that's the idea.
I would agree with it. Sort of like a dating.
What?
Sort of like a dating website.
It's sort of like a dating website, except you're dating someone who will then find you a wife. 'Cause you don't really care about the developer.
But then that wife can also divorce, and I don't wanna be stuck with then another building that we are experiencing in the downtown already. And that's my problem with putting another building.
Right, and the intent here is not to build a building. It's to find a user who needs a building, and then you build the building for that user, and they're tied into that building. You're not, I don't think we're building any speculative buildings here.
But you understand what I'm saying, you know? I mean, I would have loved for Susquehanna to say, instead of moving out here, gee, city, you know what, I'd like to have another building.
Right.
And this is what I'd like to see. I want somebody.
Yes.
That's part of the deal. You're bringing tenants in, not just building a building.
I, but those tenants can say bye-bye at any time, Marty.
Not if there's leases.
Right, leases are to be broken, and people can go belly up.
Which is why we put clawback clauses and things like that.
Yeah, I mean.
Look, I'm, I'm the, I'm the end of it that has to count those pennies at the end of the day out of my own household. That's where I'm coming from.
I agree with you, and I was gonna say, is that one of the important reasons to get a developer partner is their experience at writing those agreements. get a developer partner is they're experienced at writing those agreements so that they don't get, you know, treated in that manner, and therefore you don't get treated in that manner.
Correct, I just don't want to see another.
So we want a competent person who can do the job for you.
Right, I don't want to see another stockpalling of, this is a city building, and we're going to send it for X, sell it for X amount of dollars then if it doesn't work.
Right, no, that is not the intent.
The advantage is, we're talking about city-owned property on which to develop a privately-owned building.
Yeah.
And I think the product is important, too, because, you know, why do we need more office space? It's not just office space, but it's a particular type of office space that I guess is considered Class A.
And it's office space that has the floor plates that you need, you know?
For the amount of people that they want to put in.
Someone who is prepared to, and hopefully a byproduct of this, is some users might be found who show up and say, "Boy, I really don't want to pay the cost of a new building." And the developer can say, "Well, look, here's somebody I know who has the building down the street," they'll work out some fee arrangement between them, "and I'll bring you to them, and it'll fill up one of these vacant buildings," if it's somebody who isn't prepared to pay the price. But you're not in the ballgame right now, and this is intending to get you in the ballgame.
And again, where is this one supposed to be? Because I think it's switched sites, didn't it? Where is this building now supposed to be?
This is the MNT, and between the MNT and the Elizabeth Hager.
Correct, that's what I thought. Right across the street from the mental facility, yeah, that'd be wonderful. Okay, well, can we go forward now?
It's across the street from the parking resource.
But this developer could say, "Look, this piece of the lot works better," right? It doesn't have to be there.
Right, well, true, but I think you have to have a good reason to screw up your lot to do that.
Correct, okay.
That would be one of the terms you'll be using.
So it sounds like there's consensus to move forward with the RFQ and allow staff to bring that back to us after they've worked out the details and.
And Jim will be helping us draft the RFQ for mayor and council.
We just don't want to end up being the Elizabeth Taylor of the downtown building.
Yes, exactly.
Now, he had to work that out.
Don't bring Richard Burton.
No, that's it. He was the man before my time, I'd lead her in wine, he bats it off.
He was bouncing off Marty with X Y.
But we don't want the Richard Burton of developers either.
There you go.
All right, well, and just to publicly state what's in our memo, you know, beyond the eight projects, again, the whole idea of catalyst is that it's going to spark all these other developments and investment in Hagerstown, we can only hope for that. But we do want to recognize and continue to support the partners who've already made investments and taken on projects to enhance the city center, the library, Barbara Ingram, all the downtown arts organizations, the historical society, all of the residents and neighbors in downtown, I mean, everybody, what I think is going to make this a successful endeavor is the continued engagement of our community, which has been a big focus of this whole effort, because, once again, this is not just the city's plan, it is the community's plan, based on now 138 hours of community engagement and more to come. So I think it's important to recognize that. Starting this morning, we met with the delegation, the state delegation, received this presentation that I've heard several times now, but a good reception there. The downtown stakeholders met at 11 o'clock, and I counted about a dozen people at that meeting. Of course, we just had the board of ed receive the presentation prior to our work session, so, and then, of course, after our work session here, we have the public input meeting at the library at 7:00.
County and EDC yesterday.
The county and EDC yesterday, as council member Al Shar alluded to. So I think we're probably up to 140 hours now and counting of community engagement. So we're, that is, again, I think, the key to making this happen, and I'm a terrible car analogy person, but, you know, when you think of like a catalytic converter and what that does in terms of filtering out the pollutants and creating better emissions, that's what we're also trying to accomplish.
I think God's work.
No, that's a bad analogy.
I think God brought you that one.
Okay, okay, forget that then.
That's where you want to go.
But, you know, but the next, you know, I think we do need T-shirts that say, "I'm a catalyst," on the front, and then on the back it says, "I make it happen," and that's what catalysts do, so.
At what point, then, are we looking at how much this is going to end up costing with all?
Well, I think in the overall scheme, in the presentation, you had a certain number that we were looking at as city investment.
Well, the total.
Hey, but tell the public.
Yes.
Okay, the public, so what are we looking at, the overall?
Overall, it costs 125 million.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Tell the public.
Based upon the discussion, we just had with the school district, it's up to 140 million, it looks like.
And the percentage of that, which is?
Three quarters private sector investment, one quarter from all layers of government of different types.
I mentioned it this morning at the, with the meeting with the delegation, but Hagerstown has never gotten to where we've been and been a thriving city without, certainly without private investment and entrepreneurism, but also not without good federal partners and state partners and local partners in government to make Hagerstown a great place. This building we're sitting in was built with Works Progress Administration money. The stadium that we have now was built with Works Progress Administration money. So much of things that are in town, whether it's schools or other facilities, involve state investment, certainly the county, this is the county seat, so, you know, we're going to look to continue to strengthen and enhance existing partnerships, and certainly to create new partnerships to make these investments happen. And for one, I believe we can do this. I really have a real positive sense of optimism, and I think we have some momentum behind this. You know, I think there's, you know, in a general sense, a very positive response so far from every member of the council, and I think we can really show the community how serious we are, and we have already, by just doing what we've done up to this point. So I hope we can continue that. Mr. Al Shar.
I wanted to speak to that point a little bit after attending the EDC meeting yesterday, because I think I left that meeting a little bit confused at one particular point, and that is, I completely agree, there is momentum, there is buy-in, especially at this table, and, you know, the work of the staff and consultant have been great in moving that ball forward. And one of the questions came up sort of at the end of the presentation yesterday, and I said it very frankly, you know, I encourage us to get out and, you know, display this and present it and show it to every community partner we have, whether it's chief or greater Hagerstown, or the chamber, or EDC, or the county commissioners, or, you know, all of those partners that I said yesterday, you know, we're going to need that encouragement from, and we're going to encourage to be part of, you know, the successes that I think we've outlined, and one of the comments was made, well, the EDC can't formally endorse this plan today. And then that led to a conversation about having to go out and get formal endorsements of the plan by all these respective players, if you will. And I explained very clearly at that meeting, I don't see that, and I wanted to sort of make sure that we're clear on that point. I don't see our engagement from the staff and consultant with these parties as being an effort to go out and get some type of formal piece of paper that says, "We endorse what you're doing."
We want endorsement through the participation in projects.
And so for me, you know, I feel like we're sort of about a month ahead of, or a month beyond getting those endorsements, I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't have talked of about 10 of these items now in the last two weeks, and so that's the point that I shared, and that's the framework from which I've been working. And I don't think it negates the efforts of other parties that have those other items that complement these efforts as part of the bigger picture, but it certainly isn't being presented in a manner that if we don't get buy-in from any one of those groups on any one of these items, that we're simply not going to do it because we didn't get it. We're doing it.
I'm glad you made that point, because, you know, as I recall, no one ever asked the city to endorse the EDC's plan, which actually includes an element on downtown Hagerstown. So I think you're right, we're not seeking any bodies endorsement of this plan, only in the sense that they are aware of it. Again, one of the criticisms we hear is, no one knows what the city's plan is for downtown, and so hopefully through this engagement effort with the community, everyone will know what the plan is, and hopefully, if they do endorse it, they will be willing to participate in making these projects happen and implementing the projects. So that is our goal, is to make the projects happen.
If I could add one thing, I have been really impressed with the speed with which you're beginning to tackle small beginning elements, the first steps of things. Moving at this speed is what I have seen with our most successful projects. People who agree that they have made a decision and begin to move forward on it, and I can only commend you as an elected body and all the staff at just moving. And I can tell you that you will get positive response from the development community when they see, as one person said today, when they see some dirt flying somewhere. And it is, small success breeds larger success, and larger success breeds the more difficult successes, because people see the momentum. So just, I commend you, you're going great, keep going.
Thank you. All right, if we don't have anything else on that, we do have one more agenda item to tackle before our 7:00 meeting. I know this is especially a priority for council member Brubaker, and I guess I would like to, maybe at the same time, if we want to start considering, because I got the email about the lobbying coalition meetings coming up, which I can't make any, I cannot make any of those meetings just based on my schedule, I do think we need to put some time in our agenda sometime soon to discuss those priorities as well, but they may or may not be in line with the same MML legislative programs. But I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Brubaker.
I think there's a clear distinction. The MML priorities tend to be statewide, that all municipalities could benefit. Whereas the lobbying coalition, for the most part, we often avoid statewide things and try to concentrate on local projects, county, city, region. So I think there is a distinction. Now, sometimes they overlap, but that's.
Do you want to start off with what you think?
You know, the MML has, to me, too soon deadlines for trying to get the priorities for the next legislative session in. But we're meeting in August already to try to formulate it, and we go through a lot of head knocking down there about these things. And I think it helps to have Hagerstown get its say in there, it helps me, and I think it helps the situation. So I'm going to make, and I think two or three are most effective, but certainly anybody can suggest anything. The ones I would recommend are the old warhorse highway user revenue, because it is such a big thing, but it's got to be highway user revenue at at least the prior level of funding built into the annual funding formulas, built in, so it's, you don't have to fight it year after year. So it's some proportion of the transportation funding revenues that's knowable, everybody can plan, budget, and I say, "At the level," because they say, "Okay, we'll give you a level," and then they'll have it at 10% or something, we don't want that either. So at least the prior funding levels, you know, built into an annual, you know, the annual funding formula for transportation. That would be my first one. The second is, and I'm going to call it double taxation, MML is using different terminology sometimes, but I think that best sums up the city-county thing, and I think addressing the issues of double taxation, the issues, as we've talked about, vary county by county or even municipalities within the same county. So I think the double taxation issue is one that MML's got to deal with. And then I think one that we might consider is the stormwater management. I am a big proponent of doing things for the environment, and I want us to do our best. What I don't want is jurisdictions to be forced into doing things that they can't afford, or that their neighbors, let's say, the unincorporated area chooses not to do, we either have to do it or we choose to do it, and wind up getting penalized either financially or by who may want to invest in the city. So I think stormwater management, I think the mandate without funding is number one, and I think a statewide fee is best. And number two, the flexibility and adaptability in dense urban areas. It's something that was a problem, Rodney's not still here, Rodney and I talked a lot about, and I don't think it's still answered. And they make a lot of things about focusing on growth areas and urban growth areas, and yet some of this plays against it. You know, green fields are easier. So I think the adaptability within urban areas and the ability and fairness of funding would be, those would be my three recommendations. So, you know, I certainly would open the table up.
I think number three is important, because, like we talked in the past few weeks over these storms, I mean, largely, our inability to contain the amount of stormwater flow we have received has been because of greenfield developments north of our jurisdictional boundaries. And we can enact all the fees we want on our local populace within our jurisdiction, but if that development continues to occur, we're not going to be able to correct an issue that we can't mandate.
Well, we can't correct the situation, and they go out there because they have to pay the fee here.
That's right.
But it's a double-edged sword, yeah.
Any other thoughts or feedback?
Very good. Good job, Martin.
I think he always does a great job representing Hagerstown and with the MML. I know they probably get sick of hearing him sometimes, because he's like a dog with a bone with some of these issues, but I appreciate his advocacy on our behalf.
I have two. One is, I think that MML should entertain all of those items that delegate McIntosh talked to us about, because I think that if they're applicable to Baltimore City, who was most impacted by those items she discussed, working with municipalities, I know they're pretty much applicable to all of the municipalities in Maryland. And the second is, sort of my bone, is the continued ability for lending institutions and mortgage entities to keep a piece of property, and we heard it from her directly, 575 days on average remaining in the hands of a property owner that has been foreclosed upon, that has no intention of coming back to maintain that property or improve that property as that foreclosure and, you know, bankruptcy and abandonment process concludes itself, which hits the urban areas especially hard, and those lending institutions not have to take deed ownership within a timely fashion to do that.
I think those are great, and I think.
Me today says Maryland's number two in foreclosures in the nation.
Really? And number two in foreclosures, and then the results is what Kristen's talking about, the results.
I got to sit next to an empty house for almost two years, and a jurisdiction, you know, can't get the grass mowed or can't get paid for the grass getting mowed because they don't know who to cite, and the property owner who has the deed, they're not coming back, you know, or interested in paying the fine, but they're the ones that get the letter, and the bank decides when they're going to, you know, re-market the property. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I have no problem. I think it'd be great to send all of those. I know there's enthusiasm about that subject, and do we have a good summary of delegate McIntosh's things? Because we need something we can capture it in.
That's a trick.
Yeah, we all kind of took notes.
I know, she sent it.
We can compare notes and put something together.
Yeah, let's put something together so we can, I can get it in a phrase and then hit the points afterwards, but, you know, so it's memorable, but I think they're both excellent ideas.
And does anyone want to say anything about lobbying coalition priorities, or do we just want to get that on the agenda for, even if we don't have anything for the first couple meetings?
I won't be able to attend.
Yeah, I won't be able to either. Did anyone, Marty, you might not have seen the emails yet, but.
I skim, I haven't had a chance to get back to every calendar item. I mean, I saw it there, but I didn't.
I know Don usually goes.
Right, so I'll check with Don and then see if he might be able to be our representative, at least hear what preliminary discussions are being had, and we can get that item on our agenda in the future. Could you make a note of that? Okay, thanks. All right. All right, we'll be adjourned, and hopefully, there'll be lots of people at the library at 7:00.